Thank you, everyone. Great, we could do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox. Let the record show that Councilmember Cox is absent. Councilmember Stubble. Let the record show that Councilmember Stubble is absent. Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Also present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We get a move to approve the agenda, please. And a second?
Second.
Great. Any, not aware of any amendments? Okay, calling for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Wonderful. All right, we'll move on to communication from the floor.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but I also.
Great, thanks. Glad you could join us.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone have public comment? Yep, just come on up, and there's a microphone up here. You can Rochambeau to see who goes first. Yep. Yep, come up to the microphone, make sure it's on.
Hello. My name is Jenny Reeves-Johnson. I live at 612 Cascade Lander. I actually moved here in seventy-four and left for forty years and came back. So, I'm an artist and I represent the Power Group. Power stands for Potters of the Wind River. And I'm here tonight to basically thank the city for working with us, and me in particular, with finding a space for this public art piece that we've created. We designed, it's been a two-year road for us. Hands-on clay for a year. You have in your mailboxes all the information about Power and about the kiosk. So I won't go and repeat all that. Mainly, I want to say thank you to the city, to Ray Jean, and especially Anne, for working with me directly, never turning down a meeting. And we scoped out this city, every place possible to put this kiosk, and came up with J.C. Park in the end, and it really is the best place. It's central to the Riverwalk, which I hope this will sort of be a centerpiece for the Riverwalk going up and going downstream from Main Street. And I want to also say that I represent a group of artists that are all local, and every one of us have raised the bar for this piece. This is an outstanding piece. It's handmade clay tiles, and it's a theme of, the title of it is Invitation to Tread Lightly. You know all this from your mailers, but for the audience and people who didn't get it, it is about a healthy Propoja River ecosystem. And it's seven panels in a kiosk form. The city council members received these pictures, but I'd like to pass them around to remind you what you're looking at. The first panel that is here is the title panel. Shall I start here? It is not finished in the photo. It is going into the kiln the day after tomorrow. The rest of the pictures are of the individual panels that the artists did. We brought some young artists in, some inexperienced artists, and gave them experience in something that'll last their lifetime and generations to come. I will stay through the whole meeting. I know you're going to vote to accept it. We're very happy with the location. I'm hoping I can work with the city throughout the installation process to assure that the quality is there to the best of our ability. Time's up. Okay. I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Woolwine. Wyoming Statute Title 12, alcoholic beverages, requires eighty-eight pages to describe the relationship between Wyoming and alcohol. While studying this document, I discovered some interesting facts. And this is, this is a whole thing right here. Eighty-eight pages for alcohol. You gotta be kidding me. Anyway, it's a lot. So I discovered a few things while studying this document. For example, Wyoming Statute 124201 states that "In unincorporated areas outside of city limits, county commissioners are the legal administrators for granting, denying, or withdrawing liquor licenses." Okay? While Wyoming Statute 124101 states that "For incorporated areas such as within the city limits of Lander, the city council is a legal administrator for the granting, denying, or terminating of alcohol-related licenses. Furthermore, nothing in Wyoming Title 12 prohibits city councils from issuing less than the number of allowable liquor licenses or from refusing to issue any such licenses. A city council may deny a license based on public health and welfare concerns. Community members may voice their concerns, and the city council must then take into consideration such concerns when deciding whether or not to grant a license." I'd like to spend the rest of my three minutes addressing possible health and welfare concerns which are associated with the drug alcohol. There is a strong correlation between alcohol consumption and suicide. Regarding rates of suicide, among the fifty United States, Wyoming is always ranked among the top three with Alaska and Montana. This fact alone is cause for Wyoming city councils to vote a resounding no to the granting of liquor licenses. But the list of negative effects goes on. Liver damage, cancers, heart problems, inappropriate and risky sexual behavior, incest, rape, spouse and child abuse, weakened immune systems, ulcers, brain damage, alcohol poisoning, depression, memory loss, increased risk of accidents and injuries, aggressive violent behavior, destroyed marriages, destroyed families, DUI and public intoxication arrests, increased inappropriate behavior and lowered inhibition, impaired judgment, slowed reaction time, reduced coordination, blackouts, alcohol poisoning, dementia, brain atrophy, unintended pregnancies, miscarriages, insomnia, alcohol-related incarcerations, infertility, addiction, and destroyed careers, to mention a few. Give me one more second. As city leaders, you have no reason to be afraid of refusing to issue or even rescinding liquor licenses if for no other reason, say you are doing so for the health and welfare of our Lander families. Just simply tell the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor and Council updates, starting with Councilmember Larson.
All right, thank you. I have a, I have a list here this morning, this evening. Sorry, Anne, where is she at? We had this discussion earlier. First of all, I want to say that for the project that's going on over there in the Chamber Park, I happened to go up and, with the invitation of Heather, and look at the panel that she has done. And, I mean, they're just absolutely fantastic. You know, it's just, it's just wonderful what they've, what they've done. And I'm looking forward to having that all put together. All right. First of all, the Senior Center, they snuck their board meeting in a day early on us here this, this last week. And so there was myself and one other board member who missed the memo, and so I have no report there. But the Solid Waste Board met yesterday. It was mostly just everyday business that's discussed. Next month, we should be receiving our capacity audit to have a little better idea how much longer we have before the landfill is topped out and we start going to Riverton. Conservation District is having their meeting tomorrow, so I'll be attending that. The fly-in went very well. There were fifty-seven vehicles entered in the, in the car show portion of it. And I think that even my nineteen-fifty-five Wallace Chalmers tractor and a nineteen-twenty Russell Road Grader was part of that number, too. So I didn't know if they considered that a car or not. It was fun. It was fun having it up there. One of the main attractions we had up there was a nineteen-fifty-eight Haviland Caribou that come down from Rexburg, from the Legacy Flight Museum up there. And this was just, for those that seen it up there, those that seen it flying over town, it's just a big hunk of airplane. And two big old round motors on it that just have a sound that's like, like no others, you know, and it's just, it's just fun to be around. But the, the people that brought that, that down, they, they opened up the back of it, let people climb up in there, go clear up into the cockpit, and they could sit in the pilot and copilot seat. They could make motor noises, they could take pictures, they could do whatever they wanted to, you know. And there was just a line to that plane all day long. You know, it was just really fascinating. You know, we've had some other stuff that I thought were more appealing to me, you know, like the Mustangs, you know, they're more of a hot rod type thing. But man, the, the people just loved this big old beast of a plane. And I did, too. I thought it was just absolutely wonderful. There was also a Twin Beech or a Beech eighteen that come up from Brighton, Colorado. And it was just a gorgeous plane, polished aluminum. And I mean, it was just, it was just a beautiful, beautiful plane. And, and he was kind enough to give several people rides and, and to show off his plane. And it was a good addition to the show. The flower bombings and the spot landings were a great crowd pleaser. The fact that we had it out on the runway and stood about in the weeds to where you could see where the bombs were coming down, you know, that, that helped a lot, too, you know. But that was a real crowd pleaser. We had roughly three hundred and thirty gallons of fuel that was used in our guest aircraft. That's the Beech eighteen and the, and the Caribou. And as we've done in the past, we gave them a dollar a gallon discount on the fuel, and that still leaves the, the city making money on the, the fuel there. So we hope that there's no discord or heartburn with that, you know, for this one, once a year thing. A special thanks goes out to the Parks and Rec for their help with this, with this whole activity. You know, they were very good about bringing trash cans up and helping get stuff put together and picking stuff up, stuff up after the fact. And I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to just go over by the, the baseball parks there at the, the city park, baseball fields there. Man, they've done a lot of work with those. And it just, it just looks fabulous. And so give those guys a big pat on the back and, and thank you for what they do. And I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. That's to Mayor Cassidy.
Mayor, Council staff, just a couple of things. Want to extend a thank you and gratitude to everybody for participation at the nine-eleven ceremony and the support that we saw from the people here in the room for me and the people in the community. Got to meet with a couple of folks from the golf course. There's meetings here right around the corner, so I'll be able to attend some of those. And in meeting with them, found out that there's some folks that are on this, on the board there that I already know, which is, which is great.
Watch out for the pro, though. He's in here.
Yes, I, I've, yeah, I'm nice out for him. Was able to meet with a couple of folks about the panels today. Thank you for reaching out. Beautiful, beautiful pieces, and I look forward to seeing those installed down there at J.C. Was able to meet with Kara from the Planning Commission after I wasn't able to attend. So was able to catch up with her afterwards in preparation for the next one. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Han.
I have no city business, but I just got back from fourteen days on that fire tanker airbase. Learned a lot. Those, those pilots, they are, they're something else, and they're really down-to-earth. They're great people, and what they do is, is incredible. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. I just have a update on the Lander Chamber. We had our meeting last week. There is some business that we need to continue to move forward with, but I've met with Ray Jean, and I'll leave it at that. And then, just a follow-up to make sure that we're getting everything in line that we need to. So that was really good. And they, you know, they acknowledged their role with our very, very busy weekend that we've just had, and how we can enhance that communication through not only the chamber members but to other local businesses, so everybody's prepared and ready to go when we have an influx of people coming into town. I just want to add a couple of things as well. I was able to golf for the first time this year. The golf course is in great shape. They've, they've had their share of some problems up there, but they're managing them well. I was there on a Sunday, and it was packed. I mean, it was every fifteen minutes, there was a tee time. So that's excellent that that's being able to maintain. And that is all the updates I have.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Josh Han.
I don't have much, just like to encourage people to get out and support the Lander Tiger football team. Maybe go to some of their games. They're, they're on fire this year. It's really exciting to watch. Yeah. And I'd like to say thank you for everybody who put on the nine-eleven ceremony. I was unable to attend due to work, but it's always a fabulous deal. I appreciate it. And thank you all.
All right. My turn. A couple of updates, some I'll repeat again. You can't say thank you too much for the folks that participated in the nine-eleven ceremony. So good to see so many of our community members out there. And also a big thanks to Anne Even and Bruce Gallagher for making that happen. Pretty important to, to do that. Likewise, adding, this art exhibit is going to be phenomenal. It is just gorgeous. Really excited for that. Looping back to comments made a while ago about the property being purchased adjacent to, on the north side of town with a resident having concerns. So we were able to meet and totally resolve that. They were concerned about being able to continue harvesting their garden through the garden season and then being able to move their raised beds later in the year or next spring. Like, I'm a gardener, I can totally appreciate that. We, that was an easy, easy solution for that. Again, thanks to all the folks who made last weekend be both a really busy one and helping our economy, and a really fun one that likewise took a huge amount of volunteer time from the volunteers at the fly-in to the soccer tournament, the Apple Festival, all of that. Really neat to see all that happening. Tomorrow night is our Region Four WHAM meeting. There's a pretty big legislative update that I think all of us got that just came out. So make sure you have a chance to read through that. I'm going to be joining the Education Committee of WHAM, and it's kind of getting stood back up again. So if you can think of any suggestions that would help you either as a, you know, when you started on council or things now that you're seeing that would be helpful for council members of our ninety-nine municipalities, let me know, and I can bring that to our meeting. And, you know, a thought that comes to my mind, especially given the success of this past weekend, is I think we should be careful about our narrative about how, and we've all said about, no one wants to volunteer anymore. And I think this past weekend shows that that is patently not true. We have an incredible group of volunteers in our town that make amazing things happen. So let's, let's be careful about making that blanket statement because I think Lander's actually really strong because of how much volunteerism we have. Including tonight, we're going to be voting on two new members coming to the Housing Authority and what the Potters are doing. So there's actually, I think, a lot of volunteerism that we should be tooting the horn for. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to, yes. It will be in Riverton. Yep. Council chambers over there. Yep. For general, but I don't know about general public, but, I mean, any, yeah. I mean, certainly any, any elected officials are welcome to go. They would appreciate you RSVP-ing because they will be including some dinner and refreshments-type stuff. Yep. 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 Okay. You can be shary. Yep. Yep, that'd be awesome. Just talk numbers really fast tomorrow. Okay, we'll turn it over to staff, starting with Interim Chief Wong.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Just, I guess what I have to give you is we have our mobile data terminals are now up and active in the vehicles. I have one here, I'd be happy to show any of you what it looks like. The ultimate win with these that we will have is the guys will have them in their car. Our response times to calls will be substantially faster than they are now. Information involved in the calls, they have right at their fingertips. They can research addresses, research how many times we've been there. Oftentimes, we deal with, we'll deal with something during the day. It kicks off again in the evening, and it's a different shift now. And the reporting party will tell you, well, you guys were here today. You guys were here today. They now have the option to walk to their car, open it up, and read what happened today so they can resolve the issue. It, it cuts down them having to come back to the office all the time to get answers, to look things up. So this is a huge win for us. They're pretty mind-blown. I think a lot of my staff didn't realize what they would have at their fingertips. But they have those here now. Researching quickly, I mean, you, you guys know I'm a data guy, so just keeping track of where we are. We're on track so far this year that our calls for service are going to be lower than they were last year. Our traffic stops, believe it or not, are probably going to be a little bit lower than they were last year. Our DUIs are going to be lower than they were last year. Unfortunately, right now, if we stay on the current track that we're on, our crashes are going to be a little bit higher. The crashes have grown throughout the state for some reason, and the Government Council's Board and some of the other things I'm a part of, crashes across Wyoming this year have substantially elevated from what they have been in the past. Not, not sure why. One of the things that I wanted to touch base on, there was a pretty big article in the newspaper about the DUI Task Force, and it had some numbers in that event in there. There's a common misconception or misunderstanding that that, the report that's in the paper is a statewide national DUI Task Force. Every agency in the state of Wyoming gets X amount of federal dollars a year for impaired driving, and then X amount of federal dollars a year for occupant protection, which would be seatbelt and speeding. The money that's given to these agencies is based on your production level, how you justify the money and how you use the money. I have our report for Lander that I would love to share with all of you if you'd like to see it. Shows where we average and where we rank amongst everybody else in the state. Our stops per hour are higher, our seatbelt citations are higher, our child restraint citations are higher, moving violations are higher, overall arrests are higher. So we're very much utilizing this federal money that they're giving us. Hence, that's why they continue to give it to us. The joint DUI team that we've talked to you about a lot within Fremont County, we were the first county to do that. We're still currently the only county that's actively operating that. And it's a DUI Task Force team that's made up of law enforcement agencies, substance abuse, there's a retired judge that's on the board, the Governor Council's on the board, and we're a unified team of how do we, as a county, affect substance abuse and impaired driving? And it's not just alcohol, it's all of it. So where this all kind of started from, in 2020, Fremont County was the, the most dangerous county in the entire United States for fatalities, impaired driving fatalities. And this team came together to approach all of this and how, how do we as a community, not just law enforcement, but substance abuse prevention specialists, the courts, all of the other things, how do we come together and fix this? So in 2021, Fremont County was responsible for forty-seven percent of all of the crashes in Wyoming. As of right now, sitting here today, Fremont County is responsible for four percent right now. So we've drove those numbers down substantially. The other side of it is, when our team is out and effective, overall, we've been almost at this two years. Overall, the average calls for service that go into these entities wherever we are are down sixty percent in the time that we're there of what they normally would be, has a residual of twenty-seven to thirty-two percent for the next two or three days. So it continues to have a lasting effect and a long-term effect. What has come out of this is, last week, I was down in Natrona County because, believe it or not, they're the most dangerous county now, meeting with the sheriff, Casper Chief, Mills Chief, Evansville Chief, the lieutenant from the Highway Patrol, helping them build this DUI Task Force team for Natrona County, bringing all of their substance abuse professionals and their legal professionals into this unified to help Natrona County start to battle the same problem that, as of right now, in Fremont County, we, we have helped substantially. So they're two different things. I would assume that if you read the paper and saw there was five hundred and eighty-nine traffic stops, that was not our team in one night in Lander. That's not reality. Like, we were here Saturday night, ours was, and we had sixty-eight traffic stops with the whole team that was here. So if there's confusion about that, I just wanted to clarify that. That our joint DUI team that I deploy now, that Chief Peters deployed, is completely separate from the federal one that the whole state deploys. The big report that he did, Cody Beers did a phenomenal job with that report and the fact that we had over the last holiday weekend. Believe it or not, Wyoming Highway Patrol was responsible for seventy-five percent of those traffic stops in Wyoming in that report of the five hundred-plus stops. So everybody, I think, in Fremont County is starting to take it serious and seeing that the high visibility and the traffic enforcement is extremely effective, and we're continuing to drive crime and everything down in Fremont County. So that's all I have, unless people have questions.
Thank you. Questions? Yeah. Awesome.
One more thing before, Councilmember Cassidy. Personally, thank you for the nine-eleven ceremony. Your statement was extremely impactful, not only to all of us, but as us department heads are out and in the public, we hear a lot of feedback about our council people as much as you hear about us. Your statement and your personal put forth touched way more people than I think you realize. So thank you for that.
Just thank you, Mayor. Just a few project updates. Closing out McFarland here, so you'll see something as a change order to close out items and make adjustments to be final on that project coming up in October. Sidewalk job, we're waiting on some of the truncated domes, the special order ones, to be able to finish the corners, but that project's getting close. So I'm hoping by October, November that that one's near, close out as well. Where we're at with Lincoln Street, you can see how far we are down the street, and weather's coming, so we'll have some decisions to make on that and recommendations. What I'm hoping to have in front of you in October is days that are due for some of the things they've encountered, such as unknowns, you know, directed. you know, directed water services and sewer services that were put in at the last minute by property owners so that we're not tearing up the street. Some of the added work that's there is due time. So I'll break that out as far as due time and then we can talk about what to do with the rest of it because it's going to extend into next year for completion. So we can have those conversations, two different ones on due time versus, you know, what we do with the rest and then see what we talk about as far as winter shutdown. You know, at some point, you can't keep temp water going because you are going to freeze it up. So constructing over the winter on the water line isn't an option and then you're not going to get pavement in. So keeping the contract over, open over the winter isn't going to get the job done either. So we'll talk more about that when I can put paperwork in front of you. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Just one question for Lance. With the season closing down and it, and it shifting from active work to whatever is going to be until the end of this, end of the winter, have you had the opportunity yet or will you have the opportunity to collect the lessons that have been learned in this period of time of things that we might do different or better? You know, either on the second, what's remaining on this project or in projects in the future. There's got to be a fairly good list of very valuable takeaways that we can use into the future. Have you had the chance to do that yet?
Yeah, this Thursday we meet with our group as far as adjusting standards and specifications. And so we're doing that as far as lessons learned on all these projects and gathering, you know, what we saw and what we want to do different as well as what we were able to get from the engineers who helped us with those jobs. And then we're going to revamp the standards and specs. So you're going to see those changes in the list of things as far as lessons learned come back in front of you to make that adjustment before we rebid projects. One of the things Adam's done for us recently also has talked about liquidated damages. And so he's gone over our standards and specifications as far as what's reasonable and we're having ongoing discussion as far as that goes. So I think we're trying to bring all of those back together into, you know, what can we do? What sort of impact will that have? Not trying to chase away bidders, but also trying to make sure that we're getting the product that we want and making sure that our standards and specs are being met. Yeah, we're, we're putting that together now.
Good deal. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it wasn't carried over to the end sometimes next year because there's probably some super valuable things that life's going to take, take over between now and the time it's done. You know, if we could capture those on the front end and are early, you know, get them on paper, it'd be great to see those whenever you do get those. I'm curious what the lessons were that were.
Well, happy to, happy to share and we can go over those once we put the standards and spec changes in front of you. I agree, we want to get those done before we bid another job and we're trying to do that this fall into next year. So not trying to repeat any sort of things that we don't want to see happen next year. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. PL 566, long ago and far away. In 2022, the city applied for a public law 566 funding and that was to look at increasing the storage up in our basin, mainly Worthing and Frye to increase late season water for multiple purposes. Recreation, flood control, agriculture and municipal water. So that was no action, no action. And then in light of the recent federal scrutiny, there was no action again. But they called us and next Thursday, we are spending most of the day with them discussing our application. So they've revived that and they're looking at, at that for us again. So we're happy to have that back on the board for potential grant funding. Federal grant funding. YDOT, YDOT required a end of federal fiscal year TAP status report. So I did put that in your Dropbox for you guys. Gannet Peak, we were granted an extension and that's because like Lance said, there were some missing parts. And so we were granted an extension through the end of the year. There is a 2025 TAP application for phase two of Gannet Peak, which will complete the routes around Gannet Peak. And we should know in October if we were awarded that. Balden Creek and South Ninth contract was terminated. We asked for a scope of work changes since we got that $44 million from SRF funding. We were adding water and sewer. We asked for some scope changes. They did not grant the scope changes and that's been terminated. The Propozer River Pathway Design is closed out and ready for a future construction application. That design is, you guys saw that last year, it's on the books and accepted. So in a future grant round, grant funding round, we could apply for construction of the Propozer River Parkway Pathway Park. Yeah, and it goes from Main Street up to the new Propozer River Park. And then one more update, the Propozer River Park subdivision is going to the planning commission next, this Thursday. And so your next voting council session, you should see that. If recommended for approval, you should see that on your docket. And I would answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question about basin, about what you said, Regine. Is there a depth that we're talking or is that? What exactly does that mean?
So where we ask for the funding was feasibility through construction with this federal funding stream. When we heard nothing, the two of the districts out there, Taylor and Enterprise Districts, put in for a state funded feasibility study, which should be due here at the end of the year. So if awarded that from a federal standpoint, we'll go from that feasibility study forward. So I can't tell you a depth of a favorite meaning. We're just trying to get multiple conservation pools in that basin.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Regine, I was just curious, so the, the grant or the contract that was turned away, what options do we have at this point in time to get the silver and water and other things?
Yeah, yeah, Lance is on it.
So we're looking at other options. We did get that million dollars from the county since they're not doing any of the projects previously. So it's a bit of a replacement, but I'd like to use that to leverage more funds. So we're still looking for over $30 million. What I got from feedback was this is a really good project. There was some confusion as far as us doing all of Ninth Street in this project. And I think that's the cha, change in scope we were talking about. We weren't planning on doing all of Ninth Street. This was Baldwin and part of Ninth in the intersection work. So miscommunication as far as how that got written into the scope and then trying to hold all these ARAMs and improvements to that. And it would have put us backwards as far as receiving the grant if that wasn't removed. So with this, we're going to look at potentially reapplying for the project that we have scoped. I'm still trying to get that completely reviewed and on the table so that it's ready to go. And then potentially get another grant depending on what happens with the elementary school. So this could be eligible for a future TAP grant, but getting the project completely agreed upon between parties for the improvements for the area just needs to go back through the process. But we're also looking at other water development funds and sewer funds and other ways to infuse into these projects to help make up some of that money. So we're probably putting on hold is what we've talked about this year or next year in the Baldwin Creek. But we'll talk to you guys about project timing if you want to do that or if you want to move forward. Still bidding and find the money elsewhere. Because there's other opportunities out there to try to apply funding. And one of them we're hopeful for is this discussion on maybe the analysis of what's happening with municipalities on being eligible for additional state funding. So I'm hopeful that that may turn into something substantial that the state's working on. They're evaluating six different municipalities now. And then potentially we wouldn't have to compete except against other municipalities for that money. Like Water Development's competing against Ag now. That might be an option for us if that substantiates into a pot of money for infrastructure replacement. I think some of the concern right now as we move through rate increases is that we would price citizens, you know, so high in rate increases. If the state doesn't help, is that going to work for them? So I think there's some things out there that we're keeping an eye on and trying to see what's going to be available to help with all these projects. You're welcome.
And Lance was talking about bidding. That reminds me that the Jefferson Street Extension into Propozer River Park is slated to bid late October, early November.
Lots happening. Shari.
I don't have anything unless you have a question.
Questions for Shari? Okay.
I don't have anything either. Unless somebody has questions for me.
Appreciate that consistency.
I just wanted to let everyone know, remind everyone that next week, on the fourth Tuesday of the month, there's a work session, but before that work session, there will be a voting session. That's happened a couple of times recently and I've always called a special meeting for it. But our code says regular meetings will be on the second and fourth. But because we don't typically have a voting session on the fourth, I've been calling it a special to draw everyone's attention to it so that people understand we're doing something we don't traditionally do. So that's what that will look like next week as well.
Thanks for that and I appreciate the going above and beyond for the transparency. Actually, Shari, I did have a quick question for you if you're prepared to. How close are we to getting all the water meters in? I think we're, we're getting close or Lance?
Less than 90. And so we're finishing up on that project as well. Those 90 are going to be interesting, some of them, but some of them, you know, we've been making the call instead of the contractor from our local number. And they were like, we were just waiting for you to call the city. And I'm like, are you kidding me? Like we've sent you a certified letter and other information and you weren't signing up because you wanted to, you know, make sure that the city called you. So I guess we're getting down to the last few. And what we've talked about is at the end of this month, whatever might be remaining on that contract may be removed, you know, not to keep their installers here from Colorado trying to fight through these last few. It's not financially beneficial for them anymore. But we'll see if that number gets down to half. I'm hoping we're under 50 by the end of the month and have people signed up.
Okay, great. Thanks for that update. I mean, related to that, one of the things that's amazing with these new meters is the overall accuracy of it is really different. Some of the old meters just weren't clocking appropriately what was going through there. But also Danielle showed me, I asked her to pull up my house. It is amazing the specificity you get from this app. Like when my sprinkler system goes on, when I'm taking a shower and once this is all done, then anyone who wants to can download the app and be able to monitor their own home's water consumption, which I think is going to be a really neat feature for, for the community. All right. With that, let's move on to the consent agenda. Get a motion in a second for that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Great, motion pass, passes. Moving on to section seven, unfinished business. First one up, approve second reading of ordinance 2025-7, amending Title 12 City Administrative Provisions, Section 12-5-5, compensation of officers and employees of the Lander Municipal Code. Motion in a second, please.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Great, moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. I don't suspect there's any discussion to happen, but want to ask anyway. Seeing none, Councilmember Josh Han, call for the question.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Great, and that passes. Moving on to the next. Approve second reading of ordinance 2025-8, granting a franchise to Visionary Communications LLC on behalf of itself and its affiliates, Visionary, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system, system in the city of Lander, Wyoming. Now, motion in a second for that one, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Han, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any discussion on this one? Likewise, a repeat? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And that also passes. Next up. Approve second reading of ordinance 2025-09, rezoning original town of Lander, block 29, lots five through 10 from R5 multifamily residential district to C commercial district. And once again, a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Any discussion on this one? We had a lot of discussion before. Anything to be discussed on this one?
Mayor, I do have a couple of comments if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I had an opportunity after our last council meeting to discuss this further with, with staff, with other council members, as well as some of our realtors, our local realtors in town, just to get a better understanding of R5 and, and commercial. And it will reflect in how I vote tonight, that the input that I received from all of those sources really reflect the idea that I'm quoting somebody about, we're not really necessarily stealing from R5 and that there are other opportunities available for that in our community. And then also just noting that these decisions are never taken lightly. I think that everybody sitting up there, as well as myself, spent several hours looking into this and figuring out what works the best for our community and keeping, you know, the, the character of our community as well. So I would, you know, I think that this is a challenge just due to the area and due to the several different zoning that happens within that area. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the discussion and the feedback from staff as well as other community members.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson, I see you moving to microphone. Was that Councilmember Cassidy?
Yes, Mayor, I, I had some, some comments about it as well after, after our previous discussion on it and there's some concern about this, the volume of space that there is. There's six lots there. It's very challenging to use that building, which sits on two lots for, for true residential, I believe, you know. So it, it makes sense. And if you have that building and you want to use it for commercial purposes and you need someplace to park other than the approximately three lots that might be, or the three spaces it might be on, on the curb there. So you would need something adjacent to that. Now, one of the things I wanted to see, and I know we have the, the owner here tonight, and I, I wanted to kind of see if it would work within the business model or the vision for the use of that space to perhaps not rezone the entire six lots. If there's any measures through which it could still be viable to retain space for that building in its future commercial, commercial use and have parking adjacent to it, either all on one side or on both sides. But for any of those six lots to be able to remain for us to be potentially used in the future for housing within R5, you know. So I just wanted to kind of see if that was something that was viable or not at all. Instead of using all six of them, rolling them over to commercial. You know, if, if they, if they were to go over to commercial, there's, there's a potential that that entire six lot frontage might end up being large metal boxes, warehouses and things of that nature with residential houses across the street and behind and down the, down the next block. So that was my, my conversation that I had with someone else.
So is that an amendment you would want to propose that?
I wanted to see if we could get some comment on it. I don't know if this is something we could do right now.
Yeah, a little atypical, but sure, let's, let's have you come up and. Yes, go ahead and come up.
Say is I talked about.
Can you make sure you're, you might need to pick up the microphone so we can.
I talked about my intent and, you know.
Mr. Mayor, he'll need to say his name and address.
Dan Schultejohn, I live at 276 Willow Creek Road here in Lander. One of the things I wanted to talk about was my intent. When I first moved to this community, I became a member of LEADER, the Lander Economic Development Group. And I'm very sensitive to how communities develop. Spent a lot of time there talking about what economic development is. And generally you want more money from the outside coming in rather than. rather than recirculating money that's in this town. And as I purchased that property, I really liked it the way it was. And I thought if there was gonna be any economic development from that piece of property, from my intentions, it would have to be intact. If you look outside of the piece of property, you'll see that I purchased wrought iron fence, and that's to cover the whole property. Because I think it needs to be enclosed, it needs to be fenced for a couple of reasons. I think the young people consider it haunted, and they're trying to get in there in the evenings when nobody's around to, you know, do their exploring. And the second thing is to keep that piece of property intact. So that's already been a purchase. And then if you know about me on Willow Creek Road, I plant a lot of trees. And so I was gonna plant a lot of fruit trees in there. And so if, as I spend money to invest in that asset, it's gonna be in a way that will make sense. And, but it also, I would like it to be intact, all of the property. You know, there's nothing that I have heard of all the business ideas that were thrown my way. Somebody had mentioned a gym. We've got enough gyms. I go to a gym here in town. Why would I want to do that? You know, it doesn't help the community at all. And, you know, but there could be other things that maybe help with tourism, could be the history of the building, could be a lot of different things that might be, make it attractive to get outside money coming in. But that's what I'm committed to do right now. I've got a contractor that I've been using. I have him on another, I had him on some other property, doing some other work, but now I'm gonna flip him over into that place just to insulate it, make it nice, put that fence up. And I'll probably do the tree planting. But that's where I'm at right now. And for those of you who may not know me, that's kind of how I look at life and business. I'm not interested in putting in a car lot or something. It just doesn't make sense. Keeping it intact does. And so if it's possible, I'd like to keep it as a whole. And, yeah, and something that fits in where the community can look at it and say, "That's nice." And then if there is any commercial use for it, it's gotta make sense to me. And that's all I'm looking for, is that option. Thank you.
And any other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. We'll move on to the last of the section. Approve the second reading of Ordinance 2025-10, rezoning Earl and Farlow addition, block 110, lots 5 and 6, from R5 Multifamily Residential District to C Commercial District. I get a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this one? Well, that's easy, seeing none. Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Okay, moving on to new business. First one up is authorize the mayor to sign the art donation agreement. Get a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Josh Han, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any further discussion? I know Anne Even is here. If there's any questions, is the prime representative from the city?
Mayor, I know when I was visiting with Heather that there was a couple of different possibilities as to where that kiosk was gonna be set. One was a little closer to the property line, and one was out a little bit more to where there was some room to walk around. Is there, has there been a decision made by the staff as to where that will sit?
Thanks. Yeah, so in your packet, there should be a staff recommendation letter for you to review. This is a bit of a tricky site. Although JCPark looks like a blank slate, there's a lot going on underground in that area. As you may recall, different construction projects or flood mitigation improvement projects over the years. So, yes, we understand that is a point of concern of the Potters of the Wind Rivers. So I think our agreement is there is a location identified that we have reviewed with them with the understanding that once we call for locates, we might have that ability to shift that, you know, three feet in their preferred direction towards the center of the park. I don't foresee that we would be open to shifting that 10, 15, or 20 feet towards the center of the park due to the infrastructure underneath and just making sure that we can maintain the flexibility of that space.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And that motion passes. And I think we are all excited to see that getting installed. It's gonna be gorgeous. Okay, next up, appoint Penny Rogers and Marilyn Fisher to the Housing Authority Board. Motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
He flashed in the peace sign? That's a second. Moved by Councilmember Josh Han, seconded by Councilmember Larson. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, and that passes.
Child of the 60s.
Right. Next up, approve the Rocky Mountain Tower street lighting agreement. Get a motion in a second for that one, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Han. Any comments, questions on this? Or Lance, can we have you fill us in on this one before we get into it?
Yeah, I think that you probably should. Because this reads to me like the city's paying $5,103.80 for streetlights down on a new subdivision. That's not how this agreement works. The contractor and developer pays that fee. What we're agreeing to is to pay the $8 per month per streetlight ultimately to accept these streetlights into the City of Lander program moving forward. So what happens here is that we sign this, the developer brings a check, you know, and then we hand this over, or you sign it in front of them at that point in time, Mayor. And so it's approval to do this action. I wish this was written differently and explained differently, but that's how this works with Rocky Mountain Power and developers.
Okay, thanks. That's a pretty important clarification piece. Thank you for that. Any other questions about this? Okay, seeing none, call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And that passes. Next up, approve Lander Municipal Airport Hangar Space Land Lease Agreement for Space 201 between the City of Lander and Mike and Kelly Paborski. Motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any discussion on this one, or questions? Pretty standard. Councilmember Larson, we'll start with you for call for the question.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And that passes. Next up, authorize the mayor to sign Energy retrofit grant contract between the Wyoming Energy Authority and the City of Lander. Get a motion in a second for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Han, with a second by Councilmember Cassidy. Lance, can we turn this over to you for brief discussion? Or Anne, probably the better.
So this is a project we worked on with the E&E Task Force. And we actually applied for this grant, I believe it was last May, like, May of '24. Nothing was approved for a very long time, and then they reached back out, I think this May, to see if they still wanted to have them review our application. We said yes, so that was just recently approved. So this is a project to improve some energy efficiencies in the Public Works Building, primarily putting in some insulation in some areas that don't have any. So we think some small improvements can make a big difference there. And then this is a reimbursement grant, so we pay for that and then submit for reimbursement back. And then we have to report on the energy efficiencies for several months. I think for, is it a year out after the project is done? So we will be monitoring the bills. The E&E Task Force, of course, is very interested in helping assist us with this project. So I can answer any other questions you might have.
I also say, thanks for getting the grant. That's, I mean, the price of windows is amazing so that we're paying just the 10% match, and this pays the rest as awesome. And make it a little better working conditions for our staff.
Yep, these are good grants, and we do try to always put an application in anytime they have openings, knowing that they're pretty good projects to do and probably something we should be doing anyways. But this helps us cover those expenses.
Great, other comments, questions? Call for the question with Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay. Last up is authorize the mayor to sign Civic Plus Parks and Recreation Management Credit Card Terminals. Get a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Josh Han, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Sheri, can you fill us in a little bit about what this is all about?
The original credit card terminals that we had specked out are beginning, going to become obsolete within a year, year and a half. So it's just change into a different credit card machine and buying the newest and the latest and greatest.
Okay, so other than that, really not changing anything about...
And actually, the terminals are cheaper than the other terminals that were set to expire. But it did cause a change of scope of work, so that's why it's coming back to your table. Originally, with the scope of work, we had only specked one credit card terminal machine. Now we'll be doing three, so we can have one here, one at Parks and Rec, and one that's mobile so that we can move it to a site as needed or as a backup. So in some ways, it's cheaper, but more expensive because it's three.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
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 And that passes.